Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Hello? Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees Village of Monroe meeting April 18th at 7:00 PM. If we can all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to our board meeting. A first order of business is a public hearing on the tentative budget for the fiscal '23-'24 year. I need a motion to open up the public hearing.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Y, or I, so Carrie. Okay, the public hearing is open. I ask anyone wishing to come up to the podium, or the microphone, I should say, and be heard. Come on up.
Hi, Paula Brown, Village of Monroe. First, I would like to discuss the increase in the mayor's salary by $43,000. Last year, his salary went from in the 20,000s to 32,000. Last year, the trustees received a $5,000 increase. I had no problem with the salary increases last year. But I do have a problem this year. We've never had a full-time mayor, and I feel strongly that if this is a change to a full-time position, it should be decided by the voters in the village. First, though, I believe our attorney should check the village charter to see if this is even permitted. In addition, if the trustees vote on the mayor's raise, it is a major conflict of interest for the mayor to even vote on his own raise. For years, I have always heard that the town and village positions are not about money, but about serving the community. Serving the community. How about the fact that I have called on the mayor for those three past years about conditions in the woods by my house? Trees that are down, dead trees and branches, all in the wooded area. I will call again next week and yet send another email. If this was addressed the first year without telling me how it is best to wait until there are no leaves on the trees, then I wouldn't have to keep calling and emailing and taking up the mayor's time so that he would not have to have a full-time position and these issues would be addressed. What about the curves that were redone in certain areas spilling into the street, which will cause a problem when the streets need to be repaved? What about all the stone accumulations on my cul-de-sac as a result of the sides of the street not being oiled properly and excess stones not being swept up? Although one might find thousands of stones in the grass next to the streets. How about inadequate training, so I do not have to call again? Because my property, next to the village property, is piled high with snow. I was contacted by a former DPW employee questioning why there has been no superintendent of the DPW for six years and that two civil service positions in that area have been vacant for years. When we discuss serving the community, we should all look to the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education members. Those board members serve with a big salary of $0 per year. Now that, folks, is serving the community.
Anyone else in the public?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Before I make this comment.
The clerk, your name?
Before I make this comment, I need to make sure that I'm speaking correctly. You know where Wally's is and the Chase Bank and the Burger King? Is that the village?
Yes.
Okay, so then I can comment on that intersection?
Sure.
Appropriately, okay. So, I was thinking about this because we were at Wally's the other day. And so when you're coming from, you know, out of, from away from Monroe and you're coming in, I think it's 40. And then I noticed that when you're leaving Monroe, just after like Wally's driveway, it immediately says 55. And I really think that when you're, and forgive me, I'm map challenged. So when I'm here, and Burger King is here and Chase is here, you know, you're trying to make that turn, that left turn, the people that are coming from Monroe, they're already hitting the gas saying, "Ooh, look, it's 55, let's go." And we all probably know how difficult it is to turn left out of there. So I would just like to say, you know, just for the record, that, you know, we either need a light, I know that's probably going to be inevitable, that we either need a light or could whoever is responsible, which I have no idea, change that 55, push it further that way, or, you know, whatever needs to be done. Again, I'm not an expert on any of those things, but I just want to be able to turn left without fearing for my life.
Yeah, that's very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay, we're at a public hearing. Yeah, 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 I'm doing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
This is Friday, right? No.
Saturday is the clean sweep.
Yeah, I have a big fundraiser Friday at the age of 18. They feed 400, I believe it's people, after diagnoses. My fundraiser's Friday.
Okay, thanks.
This chair is the worst. I'm in a kid's seat and I need like the nine X L.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no one further to come up and speak regarding the budget, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, before the public hearing is closed, I'd like to read a statement into the minutes, please.
Sure.
This board put many hours into this budget the past few weeks, and the budget is, for the most part, fair and equitable. Unfortunately, the salaries of the elected village board are also included in the proposed budget, which I do not agree with. In the official paper of the Village of Monroe, the April 13, 2023 Times Hill Record Legal Notice clearly stated the salary of the mayor at $32,000. During our workshop on Sunday, April 16th, I was made aware that proposed salary was changed to $75,000 per annum. I believe this is misleading the public, with public notice being much lower salary than what is now being proposed. I therefore cannot support this budget as my fiduciary responsibilities are to the taxpayers and residents of the Village of Monroe, along with transparency. I am requesting this statement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. John M. Carl III, Village Trustee.
Okay. We had a first and a second?
I also was not made aware of the salary increase. It was discussed Sunday, but I found out today. And I just feel that there's more work to be done. Maybe there's more people that need to be hired as department heads or something that maybe could take some of the burden of the work. I would just note that this is a public hearing on the tentative budget, and the budget is not adopted. So modifications can be made to the budget, one way or the other.
Grab the microphone. Well, she's, what the council just said was that it is a tentatively, or tentative budget. Modifications can be made to the budget. The budget's purpose this evening is to bring to the public the information. So while there may be some information that suggests that it is otherwise not compliant, in fact, it is. Because nothing's adopted this evening. It's just something that we're presenting to the public. In your case, you've made a comment. We had one from our trustees, or another one from a trustee, and we had some folks clapping. So that was pretty much, you know, where we were at. Nothing is in stone. So counsel was just trying to make everybody aware of it, that there's not, the budget hasn't been adopted.
When will we get a copy of the final budget? When will it be available?
When it's adopted.
When it's adopted, she said, yeah. And just for the public's edification and clarity, the salary of the mayor needs to be posted in the newspaper a certain amount of days prior to tonight. At the time that it was, needed to go in the newspaper, the clerk had advised me that it needs to go in. I said, "Well, at this time, it is $32,000, there is no change." And there wasn't any change. We had a marathon of budget meetings on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I won't speak specifically. I think, though, there was an increase for the mayor, which I was not in the room for, because I don't believe it'd be ethical to be in the room while they're discussing the salary of the mayor. So I left. And there was discussion, that's Thursday. On Friday, there was further discussion about it. Again, not in my presence. On Sunday, I was made aware of the amount, and I was made aware of the concern. That's where it all stands at this point. So.
So I just want to clarify.
I'm sorry?
I just want to clarify that it sounds like two trustees agreed to raise it and two trustees did not.
Right.
Okay.
That's what it sounds like to a pub, too.
Yeah, yeah.
You have two trustees, but didn't know anything about it, so.
Well, that's not, that's not true, but that's okay. I don't want to, I don't want to create any, any, any more than it is, Paul, it. There was conversation, but prior to, and there was attempts for me to make a presentation to the board, but through timeliness and scheduling, it didn't happen prior to. So here we are. So you folks know what the number is now, I know what the number is now, the board knows what the number is now. It's a tentative presentation of a budget. That's it. Okay. Well, yeah, it doesn't matter. The past was the past. You know, there was a mayor, Joe Mancuso, who was here, who was a full-time mayor at the time. That position was reduced back to, I guess, what they call a part-time status. I can tell you that since I've been elected in 2018, it's never been a part-time job. It's been a full-time job, and I mean by hours, not by.
That's what you mean, you're service.
No, I agree. And I've put my time in. Trust me when I tell you, I've got 30 years doing nonprofit work. I do a lot of good, and that's something that I don't talk about at all. Because as George Steinbrenner said, "If more than two people know the good work you do, you've done it for the wrong reason." So it actually took me tonight, after noticing some of the comments that were made, that I had to write down and think about what it is I've done with this board, as my team. And it's very significant, very significant. I'm not going to read it. Anybody that wants it is welcome to meet with me, and I'll discuss it. But while I understand all these pieces, I can tell you that this board has done incredible work in this village cumulatively. In five budgets that I've been involved in, and as the chief financial officer of this village, we've had a total aggregate increase of taxes of 3.52% in five budgets. That's less than a penny on the dollar per year. Right? And we've done incredible work, all while not raising any taxes other than contractual for our employees, unions, and such like that. Other modest increases here and there. So while we look at the opportunities to do what we do, and we find that our assessment increases, the valuation of the Village of Monroe is a billion dollars. Of that billion, there's a fact that the New York State Comptroller applies to it, and we follow it. We're under the tax cap, as required by the state in New York. So doing all this, not raising the taxes, following the state comptroller's advice or recommendation or mandate, and finding out that just this month, I found out that we are actually fiscally in very sound order in the Village of Monroe, as per the state in New York. So those are all the factors behind that. Those are the events that took place. And I, I just want to just reach out to the community that's here tonight and at least have that opportunity to say that. So we have a first and a second?
Last, I close.
Yes. Okay, I need a motion.
Berenger will make the, am I closing? Berenger will make the second?
No, I need a first.
I, I thought you had a first? Who's on first? All right, I'm sorry, go ahead. Berenger will make the motion?
Second?
Public hearing needs to be closed before you, you can adopt the budget. The budget will not be adopted tonight. I didn't think we were adopting it. I thought it was just open and. If you wish to keep the public. I thought we were keeping it open. It has to be adopted by me first. And the public hearing has to be closed by. Okay, so I'm not making a motion right now. Are you going to call a special meeting to close the public hearing? Now that's the only issue the public hearing has noticed. Just go on with your meeting and I'll check. Okay.
Next order of business, due process hearing for property located at 401 State Route 17M, tax map as 223-1-5.1. Is anyone here from that property? Okay, let me just read into the minutes. Okay. Due process hearing on 4/18/2023. Code violations against the Village of Monroe's property maintenance law. 401 State Route 17M, section, block, and lot 223-1-5.1. A due process hearing was held on Tuesday, April 18th at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the Village of Monroe, 7th Stage Road, Monroe, New York. The hearing is being held to review the violation issued by the Village of Monroe Building Department on the following property within the Village of Monroe. 401 State Route 17M, tax map 223-1-5.1, as per Village Code, Section 155A-6E of the general requirements. All land must be kept free of dead or dying trees and accumulation of brush, shrubs, weeds, grass, stumps, roots, excessive and/or noxious growths, garbage, refuge, and debris, which would either tend to start a fire or increase the intensity of a fire already started or cause poisoning or irritation to people or animals, or cause or tend to cause or enhance an unhealthy or dangerous or obnoxious condition on the set property of any adjacent or neighboring property. The specific violation is the left rear section of the property having overloaded dumpsters with trash and junk spilling over and scattered throughout the well, as well as spilling over the rear property line. Large amounts of junk and debris are scattered along the left side of the property as well as throughout the rear center area of the property. So, no one from that property is here. I visited the property. Has anyone from the board visited?
I went through there today.
Yeah.
It's, the only thing that I saw that, from the pictures, that's not there is the RV. But, yeah, the back is in pretty, pretty rough shape.
So, so I was out there as well. I met some people cleaning out the front of the property yesterday and today. They were working in the rain, actually, and then today I saw them again. My thought is to afford the owner of that property an opportunity. There is new tenants coming into that property, and they are working to clean up the area on the property, including the area in the rear of the property, which is probably the most egregious area or concern. A long-time business, had been there for many, many years, and is a staple in our community. And they are working very hard to keep that environment in terms of its offering in the community, in the business community. So I'd like to ask the board to consider a stay on this with a letter to follow from the clerk, advising that the board has heard the violation and has had the due process hearing and is interested in seeing the property cleaned up, fought with.
I got a question on that. Is that one lot or two lots there?
It's one.
It's one lot. Now, we know there's a new tenant coming in there. Now, that new tenant coming in, will that be tied to a CO? Will they have to get a certificate of occupancy in order, before they can open?
Unless the use changes, I would say no. The use that he currently has was a.
Tail garden center.
Tail garden center, and as long as the use is maintained the same, I believe that there would be no additional oversight or filing required. If he changes or they change anything, yes, then certainly, there would be requirements, for sure.
Well, they've got tenants coming in there, so I, I would, I would agree on a stay. Especially if they're cleaning it up, you're certainly going to see the progress as it's gone.
Okay. Justice Berenger?
Well, I don't really have much to say about it. I know, I haven't looked at it recently, but I know it didn't look up to par for a while. So what?
I'm looking to have a stay of violation, which would not, which would prevent us from going in and cleaning it up and then reassessing onto his taxes. As I say.
The new, the new tenant that wants to go in, do they have an interest in cleaning it up, probably?
I was there today, I was there yesterday. That place is almost spotless.
Really?
They've done an incredible job. They have, they still have more to do. The, some of the greenhouses in the back are, need to be redone. But the inside of the buildings are completely gutted. The outside has been cleaned up, they've been gardening, trying to repair some of the damage done by the various. So I would agree that they should be given a chance to finish up. They've been there every single day, there's four or five people there all the time.
So if I could ask the clerk, Justice Cal, you ready?
Yeah, like I say, the only thing, yeah, the only thing I, you know, there's, looks like a pile of dirt, debris, and stuff all the way pushed in the back corner.
Okay.
In that detention basin.
Yes.
I think that, they should probably get that addressed.
Okay. Justice O'Connor?
Yes, stay makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the clerk to draft a letter to the property owner, advising that the board has agreed to a stay and that we'd like to have a meeting on-site with the building department and to discuss the plan. All right, so as soon as that's done, you give it to me, I'll sign it, and we'll send it out. Okay? Thank you.
Do we have to vote on that stay? Or just let it go? Do we just table it afterwards?
We'll, just table it, okay?
If you're not ready, vote for it, vote on it.
Well, there's an item in the, in the, in the thing, in the, in the, in the current. So this is just a property hearing. So later on is when we can vote on it.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. So, next order of business, actually, there's two listed here. I'm not sure.
Yep. Two for sale and one, three unregistered vehicles.
Okay, I only saw the truck in the front. Is there a second one in the back? I know the van, the, the multi-family thing, whatever that is, are taken out of there.
The RV?
The RV.
I took it out today. Yeah, there's two separate things here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me read the second one, please, for the public. Uh, due process hearing on 418, due process hearing is held today, uh, Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the Village of Monroe, Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York. The hearing was held to review the violation issued by the Village, Village of Monroe Building Department on the following property within the Village of Monroe, uh, for Section 155A, 6H, unregistered vehicles. The owner, tenant or occupant of any property within the Village of Monroe shall now park, permit or allow the exterior parking or storage of more than one unregistered car or permit the parking of any unregistered or unregistered vehicles, of any registered or unregistered vehicles in any manage, uh, manner which would violate the zoning code of the Village of Monroe. The failure of any owner, occupant or tenant to comply with these requirements or of the requirements of the zoning code of the Village of Monroe shall be deemed an offense under this section. The specific violation is three unregistered vehicles, two for, for sale and one white pickup located in the front parking area. So I think again there, uh, my recommendation is to get the building inspected. I know he's just, the owner of the property's just had a medical, uh, procedure done and is not on, onsite at this current time, but the new tenants are. So we can, I think we should just go out there and just address both of these. That's my recommendation.
Okay, so just table this. I, I agree to table it.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, uh, next order of business, uh, I'd like to take a roll call. Trustee Berenger?
Berenger's present.
Trustee Ferraro?
Present.
Trustee Carl?
Present.
Trustee O'Connor?
Uh, present.
May Dwyer here. Okay, uh, next order of business. Department reports as submitted by the clerk and all department heads. I need a motion to approve the, as submitted by the department heads.
Do we have any, um, budget modifications tonight? I don't see any on the agenda.
I'm not aware of any. Uh, I'll inquire though. Okay, so, uh, going back to the, uh, department reports as submitted by the clerk on behalf of the different departments, can I get a motion to accept them as submitted?
Berenger will make a motion?
Second?
Carl will second.
Further discussion? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, uh, the approval of the meeting minutes of the organizational meeting of April 3rd. Uh, I need a motion to accept the, uh, meeting minutes of the April 3rd meeting. Uh, that would be trustee Ferraro and trustee O'Connor.
I'll make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Call a question?
Berenger abstain.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl abstain.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business is the regular meeting of April 3rd. I need a motion to accept the meeting minutes as submitted by the clerk.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Uh, Ferraro, second.
Call a question?
Berenger abstain.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl abstain.
O'Connor, aye.
Okay, next order of business, completion of probation, deputy village clerk, Aileen Ryan. Trustee O'Connor?
Be it resolved, Aileen Ryan has completed her probation in accordance with Orange County Civil Service rules. The Board of Trustees approved her permanent appointment effective April 1st, 2023. The necessary MSD-426 will be submitted to the Orange County Department of Human Resources. I'll make that motion.
Berenger will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business is the appointment of seasonal laborer, Alan Prince. Trustee Carl?
Yep, uh, resolve, the Board of Trustees approved the appointment of Alan Prince to the seasonal position of seasonal laborer. Mr. Prince is being appointed for the purpose of running one of the village's weed harvesters on Monbeisha Reservoir or in Crane Park to assist in extricating the weeds in these two locations. Preapproval of his appointment has been received by the Orange County Department of Civil Service and his appointment is effective June 1, 2023 at $24 per hour. And I will put that into a form of a motion.
Second, please.
O'Connor will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business is the, uh, IMA with the town for the grant writer Millennium. So, uh, this is a discussion that we had started regarding the grant writing firm, Millennium. We had entered into a, uh, inter-municipal agreement with the town of Monroe and the village of Harriman for the services of the grant writer, procuring, uh, potential grants that the villages and the town can use toward their projects and so forth. Uh, and it was a good relationship, uh, or has been a good relationship. This past year Harriman has decided to bow out of the arrangement and no longer participates in the IMA. Therefore, that leaves the Village of Monroe and the town of Monroe together. However, uh, when the three municipalities were participating, uh, the Village of Monroe was a 25% participant. The Village of Harriman was a 25% participant and the town of Monroe was 50. Now we would be a 50% participant, sharing the equal burden with the town and a 50/50 split, which in our case, coming up this year would be about $20,000. We've talked about it on, on several occasions, but we probably should do a little conversation right now.
Well, we have to figure out if it's worth that cost and what we're getting for it.
Right.
What is everyone's opinion on that?
Well, I know I have sent numerous things to Millennium, CC the mayor on it. A lot of times got no response. You know, when, uh, different DEC grants and stuff that I get emailed to me, I, I, I forward it on and, um... I don't know, since I've been back on the board, I don't really see, we've got a couple of things, but...
Do we know why Harriman does not want to participate anymore?
Same reason.
I think the, the, the one individual that was working for them.
Caleb, he left.
Caleb, that's the guy in the beginning was pretty, and then it just kinda, nobody responded to you. You'd send it, you wouldn't even get an acknowledgement that they got the email.
Yeah.
Um, so I may, maybe it's time that, um, we look at, uh, look at other venues.
Uh, the one, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, there is two points to note that is important. Currently, we have two grants that are out there. One is a, um, a WIA grant for a water project here along Stage Road, running from just beyond, uh, O'Toole's Pub out towards Stage Road and, uh, and 17M. It's probably the, or one or if not the oldest section of piping in the Village of Monroe. And we applied for a grant which has not been returned yet through Millennium. The second one is a DRI which is called a Downtown Revitalization Initiative. And that is a multimillion dollar grant opportunity that I applied for, uh, on behalf of the board, with the state of New York and our region down here in Hudson Valley. If awarded the grant, uh, they've done a couple of different things. One year, well, several years, they've done a $10 million grant. Recently, uh, as I understand it, they've dropped it and given two $5 million grants. I would love to see them do 10 $1 million grants so that more people participating can, can, uh, can come into that opportunity. But, uh, so there are two of those things that are sitting out there. The one thing I could ask the clerk, I thought I heard there was a monthly stipend, right? Okay, so what I'm just gonna suggest to the board consider, because what I don't want to do is I don't want to burn a bridge, which I have another 13 days to do. And, uh, and still be in the middle of this, these two grants. You know, what would be the incentive? I, I don't mean to be honest about it, but that's probably a, a problem, potentially. I thought I saw it. I thought the, uh, the, uh, the town of Monroe, uh, their, uh, Jen Snar sent over something. Oh, is it?
It's a monthly retainer. I think it's basically $33.30.
Okay, so, uh, they're, they're committed to the end of the fiscal year for the town, so that's December 30th, right? 31? So if it'll increase to, uh, 3330, our participation at that level after April 30th would be half of that. So that would be about, you know, 16, 65 or something like that, right? Can we find out, can we ask, uh, the town if we're, if we're able to potentially participate on a per month basis? As opposed to signing, you know, monthly retainer as opposed to an annual agreement?
Well, I got a question on that because if, if they're following the, um, the, the count, uh, the, the town's fiscal calendar year.
Right.
Our budget starts June 1.
Right.
Can we hatch on for six months?
Something. I don't know what exactly...
So we could, we can budget for six months' worth of, um, and it takes, takes the town to the end of the year and at least they have some partnership with them till the end of the year and then... That might be something to do.
How do you feel about that?
If we could do a, a, a monthly thing, because they really haven't done much for us in a long, long time.
No.
So, and it's almost like they're holding us hostage, uh, you know, with these two grants.
Are these grants with the agencies now or are they still writing them?
No, 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 they, they went out. Both went out in the fall.
Alright, so if they're with the agencies...
One was supposed to come out at the end of March. I haven't heard anything. That was the WIA for the, for the, uh, for the water main. And the DRI, I'm not exactly sure when the delivery date is.
Well, when that, you know, once, once they complete the, the grant writing and send it off to the, the various state and federal agencies, isn't their job done at that point or?
No, not really. I mean, they, they help us work through any unsolved or any, uh, open issues that may come up. Like we're having one right now with them, uh, on something that they were supposed to bring to the finish line after we, we were awarded a $667,000 grant that I wrote for, for land acquisition. And, uh, there was paperwork that needed to be filed that the grant writer has not finished.
Well, then, I guess I'll go back to my first, uh, suggestion. Let's, let's, from June 1st, uh, we'll take it, you know, for six months. And we can budget accordingly for six months.
Okay, so why don't you reach out to the town, find out what opportunities there are, whether it's month to month, whether it's six month, get back to the board and we'll pick up the issue next month.
Yeah, because it's supposed to expire April 30th, alright, so that's, it's, it basically you're gonna, you take it for seven months.
Yeah, you know, to, to trustee, uh, Ferraro's point, my only concern is, is that, uh, I agree with you. Caleb Duncan was, was just amazing. As a matter of fact, I still have his phone number and I still call him. He lives in Brooklyn and he's happy to take a call. Can't do much more than that. But he's got a lot of experience in grant writing, so he's been great in, in taking my work and, and editing it and so forth, so... But, uh, you know, this is, this is, uh, in six months it'll be nine grand that we're giving away for, we don't know what.
Right.
Why don't we just find that out? And then while we're doing that, let's get, uh, Dave a call and ask him where these two grants are. I suspect it's being held up because New York State has not finalized their budget. So the funding is not there yet for either grant. So let's see if we can find out those two pieces, okay?
Alright, well then I, if this expires on April the 30th, I assume that we're, um, we're gonna have another meeting for the end of the month because we gotta do the project.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll leave that sit open, that conversation. Next order of business is the Greenlight Networks, uh, agreement, trustee Ferraro?
On March 7th, 2023, Casey Henninger gave a presentation on Greenlight Networks. They provide high-speed internet service focusing on residential and small business customers. Fiber bandwidth transmits more data than any other technology, provides high speed on all devices throughout the home, supporting multiple simultaneous users and is consistently fast with no lags or buffering. In order for Greenlight Networks to proceed with providing their services in our area, the Village of Monroe needs to sign an agreement with them. So resolve, the Board of Trustees authorizes Mayor Dwyer to sign the master agreement with Greenlight Networks, Henrietta Road, Rochester, New York, and I'll put that in the form.
Motion?
A motion and discussion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would only add that in terms of the schedule that is attached to this, uh, contract, it calls for perpetual right-of-way. Whereas the term of the contract is year-to-year with 30 days, uh, termination. I would suggest that you sign this with the proviso that, uh, the schedule that's attached would, um, be revised to say that the right-of-way easement would be in effect, enforce in effect, instead of perpetually for so long as this agreement remains in effect. Is that, that could trip you up a little bit, right?
Absolutely.
So I would just suggest that language. I have the contract, I can change it.
Yeah, I would and ask for an amendment and then, uh, you'll return that because you've been emailing with them, right?
Uh, well, I've been emailing with trustee Ferraro.
Yeah.
But this goes back to last year that I made this comment, yeah, so...
And, and she sent you recently the revised one, so is it still word for word the same? You sent her a revised one? Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I need to change that.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So then we'll table this till the next meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I think you can, look, you can, you can...
Contingent?
Contingent on them accepting this minor change to the schedule.
Now, do they have, uh, have they got their approvals with Orange and Rockland on their, they're gonna use their polls, I'm assuming?
Well, they won't get that till we give them the permission.
Of course, if they don't get that, they won't...
Oh, then it's done.
It says no and void.
Yeah, it's dead.
There's a fiber optic, they're, they're, they're still stringing the stuff on the, on the, on the double poles, on the old poles.
Well, there's multiple companies now.
Yeah, but they're, 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 they're putting stuff on the poles that have been cut down all around, all around Monroe.
Okay, so do you want to, um, a base?
You had a motion, uh, with the contingency that...
With contingency.
That the agreement be modified by council and approved by the vendor and then sent back to us. Great. Second?
O'Connor will second.
Further discussion?
Yep, um, on number five here, it says counterpart approval. No works, no work on said property will commence until written authority is received from the proper authority of the counterparty, i.e. highway superintendent. We don't have a highway superintendent, so are we going to put something else in there in that place?
Well, IE is just an example.
Understood.
Well, IE is, is, EG is an example. IE means the highways, so, so we can, um, we can put in highway superintendent or...
Designate.
Designate.
Alright.
Or designate...
Who put that in there?
I don't know, it's right here.
No, I get it.
That's from them.
Who put that in there?
That's in there.
From them?
You're, you're talking about five?
Yeah, number five, counterparty approval. It's probably a boilerplate.
No, I don't see that in five. Is that issuance of permits?
I got counter, counterparty approval.
Okay, maybe I'm just missing it. I'm looking at page two.
And that goes, it's the top of the, it's the top of page two, I guess.
Oh, that's the schedule. Okay, so let me look at that. Because it's not in the actual agreement.
What number do you have? Five?
Uh, well, it's...
Yeah, I see that. It is EG, it's not IE, so therefore it is just an example, so it doesn't really have to be changed. Yeah, I see that, it is E G, it's not I E, so therefore it is just an example, so it doesn't really have to be changed.
Yeah.
Unless you want something specific.
Is it five, though?
Yeah, it's number five, counter counterparty approval.
It's it's number five of the schedule?
This is, and this is page eight to ten, so.
So I have a master agreement, let's go with the heading of the first page, it says master agreement.
Okay, so if you go to the schedule that is after the signature page and it's one master agreement, two term, okay? Um.
Okay, so what we're gonna do
So if you look at number five.
I got it, I got it, we're done. What I need is, I need the E G highway superintendent removed and I need to have my name put there, mayor.
Mayor or his designee.
Or or his designee.
Just the designee.
In the event.
Well, wh- which is it?
Mayor or designee.
Okay. Designee by design or or person designated by the Board of Trustees or the mayor, or his designee?
By the Board of Trustees, it should be, I think.
By the mayor, and once the board approves it, then it's
Well, mayor or the mayor's designee or the Board of Trustees' designee? Or?
The mayor or the board, village boards' designee, God forbid something happens.
Let's say I die.
And he's he's incapacitated.
While I'm on the road, doing some engineering work for the Village of Monroe, car hits me and I die. Who will take that spot? Lost a salary, you'll end.
The village board would, the village board would designate a designee.
Okay, okay, mayor or the village board or in his absence?
Ah, come on. Rocket science, let's let's come up with an idea.
Or her absence. The person, I'll deal with this.
Alright, I'm not prepared tonight, table it, next.
Alright.
Okay, Leeds, trustee Berenger.
Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approves administrative sergeant Timothy Young to attend the mid-atlantic law enforcement executive development seminar, Leeds, that will be held June eleventh, two thousand twenty-three through June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The seminar registration is eight-hundred-fifty dollars and five nights accommodations at a cost of seven-hundred-seventy dollars, one hundred fifty-four per night for a total cost of one-thousand-six-hundred-twenty dollars to be allocated from budget line A point-three-one-two-zero point-four-seven-two education. And I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl will second.
Further discussion, call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, next order of business is the event application, which So we have an event application here from the Lions Club, they'd like to do a fishing derby on June twenty-sixth here in the village on the ponds. Uh, they've submitted an application, it's been approved by all parties. Necessary insurance and liabilities have been addressed. Everybody has it in their packets. They don't have the
Do you want me to read it? Or do you wanna read this?
No, no, I don't, you do it.
Okay. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the event application submitted by the Monroe Lions Club to host a fishing derby on the south side of Crane Park on Sunday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, from eight AM to one PM. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, the D P W and Police Department. The Monroe Police Department will monitor the area and provide assistance as needed at no additional cost. Monroe Fire District and volunteer Monroe Volunteer Ambulance will be notified. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second?
Carl will second then.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
Then at the bottom, it says, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees waives the event application fee due to the Lions Club being a nonprofit organization. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, the authorization to advertise uh put out the bid, the Four Shee Street Waterline Replacement Project, trustee Carl.
Yep, resolve, the Board of Trustees authorize the village clerk to place a legal notice in the Times Herald Record advertising the Four Shee Street Waterline Replacement Project providing provided by the village engineer, Lincoln Tully, P C, with a bid opening scheduled for Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten AM. And I will put that into a motion.
O'Connor will second.
Further discussion, call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Uh, we've tabled the next two items, which is six D, the Village of Monroe concerning property maintenance of four oh one has been tabled, uh, six E, same property, separate violation tabled. Next order of business, an event application for the Monroe Woodbury Little League Opening Day Parade. I don't have anything. Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves the event application submitted by Mayor Dwyer for a parade to celebrate the Monroe Woodbury Little League Opening Day on Saturday, April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three, beginning at ten AM with a rain date of Saturday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Kickoff will be at the Milpon Commuter Parking Line, proceed to Lake Street, to Carpenter Place, to Mapes and into Smith Clover Park, the application has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, D P W, Police Department. The Monroe Police Department will provide police officers who will shut down roadways and manage traffic control points throughout the parade route. The village insurance carrier, Marshals and Sterling Insurance, Monroe Fire District and Monroe Volunteer Ambulance Call will be notified at the event when the approval letter has been sent. I need a motion to accept the application as submitted.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
Six G.
Okay, next order of business is the Solitude Lake Management of Monbeja Reservoir, trustee Carl?
Resolve, the Board of Trustees authorize Mayor Dwyer to sign the service contract for Monbeja Reservoir with Solitude Lake Management, twenty-eight forty-four Crusader Circle Suite four fifty, Virginia Beach, Virginia, one-two, one-three, four-five-three, in the total amount of fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-eight dollars, three-thousand forty-two dollars per month for a period of four months, beginning May first, two thousand twenty-three, to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, to be allocated from budget line F eighty-three twenty point-four-five-hundred, source contractual, I'll put that into a motion.
Second, please.
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, introduction of resolution number two of two thousand twenty-three. Introduction of resolution number two of two thousand twenty-three, Village of Monroe Comprehensive Plan and Scheduling of a Public Hearing. The Village of Monroe resolves introducing the proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and setting a public hearing on okay, whereas the Board of Trustees has been working diligently to update its Comprehensive Plan and now therefore be resolved that a copy of the draft amended Comprehensive Plan is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the trust Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York and be it further resolved that a copy of the aforementioned draft amended Comprehensive Plan will be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, seven PM on May second, two thousand twenty-three and be it further resolved, the village clerk shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper, the Village of Monroe, no later than ten days prior there, too. I need a motion.
Farraro will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Further discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business is the scheduling of a local law, number four of two thousand twenty-three, the Village of Monroe Landmarks Preservation Local Law and scheduling of public hearing. The Village of Monroe Notice of Introduction of Local Law Amending Chapter Two Hundred, known as zoning, titled Village of Monroe Landmarks Preservation Local Law and Setting a Public Hearing. Be resolved that an introductory local law titled Village of Monroe Landmarks Preservation Local Law is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York and be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees and be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said local law at the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at seven PM on May second, two thousand twenty-two. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on the said proposed local law, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at seven PM on May second, two thousand twenty-three. And be it further resolved that the village clerk shall cause or publish and or shall shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper, the Village of Monroe, no later than ten days prior there, too. I need a motion to schedule a public hearing on this.
Berenger will make the motion?
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, trustee Carl?
Yep. Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves a purchase of a zero-turn riding mower for the Water Department off New York State Contract, P C six-nine-three-nine-six in the amount of twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-two dollars and sixteen cents to be allocated from budget line F eighty-three thirty point-two-five-zero purification equipment. And I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Thank you, Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, introduction of local law, number five, Village of Monroe Place of Worship and Schools Local Law and Scheduling of a Public Hearing. Village Monroe Resolution Introducing a Local Law Title Village of Monroe Place of Worship and Schools Amending Chapter Two Hundred of the Village Code Zoning. Be resolved that an introductory local law titled Village of Monroe Place of Worship and Schools is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York and be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees and be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, seven PM on May second, two thousand twenty-three. And be it further resolved, the clerk shall publish publish or of course to be published a public notice in the official newspaper, the Village of Monroe, no later than ten days prior there, too. I need a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business is introduction of local law, number six of two thousand twenty-three, Amendment to the Village of Monroe Architecture Review and Scheduling of a Public Hearing. Village of Monroe Notice of Instruction of Local Law Amending the Provisions of Section Two Hundred there seventy-three of the zoning law which regulates the architectural review by the Planning Board. Be resolved that an introductory local law titled Amendment to the Village of Monroe Architecture Review is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York and be it further resolved that a copy of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees and be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on the said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, seven PM on May second, two thousand twenty-three and be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on the said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at seven PM on May second, two thousand twenty-three and be it further resolved, the village clerk 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 shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper, the Village of Monroe, no later than ten days prior there, too. I need a motion.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Last order of business here on the uh, second to last order of business, an event application for Monroe Clean Sweep. Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves the event application submitted by Paul Kempenella, board member of the Greater Monroe Chamber of Commerce for the Monroe Clean Sweep, two thousand twenty-three, to be held on Saturday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, from eight AM to twelve noon. This joint event between the Town of Monroe, Village of Paramount and Monroe will pick up trash and debris along the roads within these municipalities. The Board has waived all fees associated with this event, being it as a public service being done by volunteers for the betterment of the community. All departments have signed off on the event. Monroe Police Department will assign police officers to assist with vehicular and pedestrian traffic during the event at no additional cost. I need a motion to approve the event as submitted.
Farraro will make that.
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, resolution to establish lead agency pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SECR, for the purpose of amending the Village of Monroe Comprehensive Plan and proposed implementation of local law. At a regularly scheduled public meeting of the Village Board of Trustees at the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, being held at April eighteen, two thousand twenty-three and whereas the Board of Trustees finds and determines that it is reasonable and appropriate to update its Comprehensive Plan from time to time in the zoning law to implement the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan in order to protect the public health and general welfare of its citizens. And whereas the Board of Trustees has been working diligently to update its two thousand seventeen Comprehensive Plan and during said review has determined that some of the worthy goals identified in the two thousand seventeen Comprehensive Plan have not yet been implemented in its zoning law, as well as implementing new recommendations identified in the draft amended Comprehensive Plan of two thousand twenty-three. And whereas the Board of Trustees is considering introductory local laws four, five and six of two thousand twenty-three, amending the zoning law in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan and whereas the Board of Trustees is the only lead, is shooting the only agency authorized to modify the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Law. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby declares itself the lead agency as required by the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SECR, pursuant to SECR Regulation Six, N Y C R R, Part Six Seventeen, for the purpose of amending its Comprehensive Plan and adopting local laws to implement its recommendations. Uh, name of the action is known as Village of Monroe Comprehensive Plan, the location is
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, and I will add to that, and local laws implementing same as the name of the action. And same for the project. So so I'll just, so the name of the action is the Village of Monroe Comprehensive Plan and local laws implementing same. It's village-wide, it's the location, the project is amending the Comprehensive Plan and zoning law. It's a type-one action and the documents will be available at Village Hall for viewing. And I'll make those minor modifications.
I need a motion to establish the lead agency for the Village of Monroe.
Berenger will make the motion?
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
Mr. Mayor, before you go, if you're ready to go to mayor's comments, we need to go back to the public hearing for the for the for the budget. So just so the board is aware, this public hearing, this um proposed budget must be adopted by May first. So you will have to schedule a special meeting to do that. Um, you can make changes to the tentative budget, but those cannot be done until after the completion of the public hearing. So if you wish to make changes to the tentative budget, those have to be made after you close the public hearing, which gives you very short time to do that unless you close the public hearing tonight. Unless you wanna leave it open and call two special meetings. But again, uh, any changes you want to make to that tentative budget according to Village Law five dash five oh eight four and five oh eight, five oh eight, subsection four, after the completion of the public hearing, the Board of Trustees may further change, alter and revise the tentative budget. And then it goes on. Nothing relevant here. So I would advise the board that if they want to make changes to the tentative budget, they need to close the public hearing. Otherwise, the tentative budget will become the adopted budget.
Okay, so I need a motion to close the public hearing on the tentative budget fiscal year two thousand twenty-four.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay, um. So just for the for the public and and for everyone else in the audience, I appreciate and on on online. Being half Italian, half Irish brings me to what I wanna read here. And I think it's important, stating back to the original the original thoughts of the budget. Uh, tax increases overall since two thousand nineteen, my first full year of the next five years budgets to be proposed this evening for fiscal year twenty twenty-four have increased of three-point-five-two percent in total, while building a fund balance of over three-point-eight million dollars. When I came into office, there was seven-hundred-thousand dollars in the bank unreserved fund balance. This village now has over We've removed and replaced over one point five, uh, oh, excuse me, dollar value, one point five million dollars of curbing and sidewalk over the past two years here in the village. We removed and added approximately a thousand linear feet of storm drainage water pipe on High Street, Cooper, Karate, and throughout the village. We negotiated and secured five-year contracts with the Police Department and the D. P. W., which are currently in force right now. We've written over one point eight million dollars in grants for the village, including land acquisition, infrastructure for our water system. We have installed over a mile of water mainline, removing all water mainlines, assuring good, secure delivery of water in the village. Having planned and maintained with our D. P. W. A. 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 A.[754.16] seating sections throughout the park, electric infrastructure work, plantings, trees, ornamentals, et cetera. I'm in the talks right now with the firm to design an all-inclusive playground for our airplane park. I am working with the Smiths-Clove Park Commission in securing new resources to increase the offerings and the programs within the park. We and town together support the budget for that park. Currently, we have paving projects scheduled for North Main Street, Still Road, High Street, Cooper and Karate scheduled for this fiscal year and this summer, which would be the new fiscal year of 2023, 2024. Currently, I, the mayor, am a member, a four-year member of the Orange County Community Block Grant Committee, which works throughout the Orange County, working with and reviewing other municipalities' infrastructure projects and community projects. The board that I serve on, which is a public service, I'm not paid for that position, is very important work. It allows the allocations that Orange County gives to this CDBG group to allocate toward senior projects and infrastructure projects throughout the county. It's very important work. Our village is acknowledged by the state and New York Controller's Office to be financially and fiscally in good shape. Our board has just reviewed and allocated funds in our budget to start a dedicated code enforcement department and will in near future be staffing up to do the work in our village. The Village of Monroe is currently involved in four lawsuits protecting the residents of our Village of Monroe, including protecting Village Parkland from illegal dumping. In sum and substance, it is so difficult today to find and recruit people that are invested in the opportunity to work here in our village that have a solid work ethic with integrity and honesty. It's a major issue throughout the state. And while we are challenged, we still continue to do the people's work. It's a very important piece for this board to be able to do, and we take that work very seriously. That's all I have. Thank you.
Just a reminder, Operation Clean Sweep this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. down in St. Anastasia's.
Yep.
Hopefully, the weather will be good. Need the volunteers to come out, get Monroe cleaned up.
Do some community service. Mr. O'Connor?
No, it just was nice to meet with the treasurer last night and had put the final piece together on the number. And, you know, it was a nice way to end all the work that we did for the budget.
Agreed. Okay, council, do you have anything?
No. I do have something for executive session.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything, anything on the yellow house down here with the insurance yet?
Yeah, they're ready to cut a check. They're waiting, I'm waiting for the siding. It's a chestnut siding from a vendor up in Walden.
And that guardrail across the street, where are we with that?
He's ready to move forward with it. He doesn't have, just for the public, trustee Carl is talking about the guardrail up on stage in 17M. Anybody remember several years ago, maybe two years ago? A gentleman in a vehicle drove up on 17M. He was under the influence, and he crashed through the guardrail, and half the vehicle went over the guardrail down toward the pond in the waterfall area. They got him out and so forth and so on. They got the car out, and we've made some very simple repairs in trying to make it safe for people to walk by it. But that brought to light to something that I'm really fussy about here in the village, and that's safety. The replacement of the guardrail in same or in kind, for me, doesn't serve the purpose. These ponds and the walking trails we have around them are very significant in Orange County. We get thousands of people a day to come and walk those ponds. And that is a piece that they walk in order to come back up from the Sal Pond and 17M. I don't want to put residents or guests in harm's way, God forbid. If anybody hadn't been walking there that day, there would be less people today after that accident. So I'm committed to a different type of project, which takes the structural guardrail and puts it on the outside and puts a ornamental interior, very similar to the anodized aluminum one that we have on the trail now over by the ponds, on the interior. So that keeps people safe from falling in, and on the outside, it keeps cars from hitting anybody on the way in. And honestly and frankly, I wish people wouldn't even walk down that far. Part of what we're working with, a firm, we have a meeting on May 6th.
May 6th.
Kim Lee Horn, they're coming in. They've done some assessment work and a couple of different ideas that gotten floated by, including some, maybe some intermediary bridges. Maybe a way to keep people off the intersection and actually get them moving onto the other side. So from Stage Road to 17M, away from that vulnerable area. It's anybody's walk that knows that it's about that wide. And if you and your puppy are walking on it, the person coming the other way is in the street or vice versa. It's just not safe. It's a stupid plan. I don't know how it got done, but it did. So that's what we're committed to. So trustee Carl just asked, what was the status of it? We have a vendor that does that work. He just wants a design, and that design is something that's in the queue. It's just a staging thing. So, anyway.
Good, thank you.
Okay. We're all good? Public comment. Anyone wishing to public?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees. My name is Michelle Hironomy, and I am here as a concerned citizen who came, recently came across some very disturbing information on AuditNY.com, which is the website of New York Citizens Audit. They are a nonpartisan, nonprofit citizen education group formed for the purpose of performing an open-source audit of the New York State Board of Elections. The group's deficits report lists unnatural and obvious manipulation of the voter database in the New York State 2020 general election, rendering the election uncertifiable. And whoever certified the election actually committed perjury. Their findings were taken from New York State Board of Election rolls, county voter rolls, and the New York State Secretary of State official website. Every New Yorker, regardless of political affiliation, should be very alarmed by the information contained in the 16-page report, which can be found on AuditNY.com. I will now read you a summary of the 16-page deficits report. There are three basic tenets of an election. One, voter rolls must be accurate. Two, votes counted must be from qualified voters. Three, the numbers of votes must equal the number of voters. Their findings as presented in the full study of deficits. 2.4 million New York State voter ID numbers were attached to 1.2 million registrants. 987,000 voters registered on January 1st from the year 1900 to 2021. 1.9 million registrations in the state voter rolls are missing from the county rolls. 625,000 more registrations than voting-age citizens in just six counties. 740,000 ineligible votes statewide. 338,000 more votes cast than voters who voted in 2020. 195,000 votes cast in New York City that went missing in the New York State voter database. The conclusions were over 1 million felony violations of New York State election law. 95 state and federal legislative races impacted by 740,000 ineligible votes. The New York State Board of Elections, whether by dereliction of duty or deliberate malfeasance, is unquestionably responsible for affecting election outcomes in New York. A full end-to-end audit by professionals and possibly law enforcement is warranted. The data sources used were New York State Board of Election voter rolls provided on October 1st, 2021, county voter rolls, not all counties responded to FOIL requests, and New York State Secretary of State website. This same information has been provided to state and federal officials, Attorney General, Secretary of State, State Board of Elections, Inspector General, FBI, New York State Police, who passed it on to the Foreign Intelligence Task Force, state leadership of Democrat and Republican parties, county officials, county election officials, sheriffs, and district attorneys. So far, New York Citizens Audit has been met with indifference and inaction. They are asking for your help. Bottom-up pressure from towns, villages, and cities through their resolution and petition. This will put pressure on the New York State Legislature, who are currently working on a bill. It is our right guaranteed under the First Amendment of the Constitution to petition our government for redress of grievances. It is the sworn duty of every New York official to investigate all of these discrepancies. Our voted database and ballots are a critical part of election infrastructure. Our state and national security, along with our individual civil rights to free and fair election hangs in the balance. We understand that a local municipality does not legislate to the county. However, your constituents voted for you to be their voices. Our voices are not being heard. Concerned citizens are bringing the deficits report and resolution to their towns, villages, and cities across New York State, asking their local officials to support this end-to-end audit of New York's 2022 midterm election. As of today, I'm happy to say that nine towns have signed the resolution, and more are on the way. We know this situation is not of your doing, nor does the board have authority to correct it. We are asking you, our local representatives, to adopt this resolution with a vote of yea for a complete end-to-end audit of the New York State 2022 midterm election. Doing so will help push this further up the line to the state legislature where it can be rectified. It is the only way New York State voter rolls can be corrected now, and with citizen oversight, remain that way for the future. Should you have any further questions relating to the data that you read, please go to info@auditny.com. That's info@auditny.com. Thank you for the opportunity to address this board. And before I give you the resolution and deficits summary, I would like to just make a quick statement. I am hereby asking the elected members of the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees for their support on this most crucial matter and for their decisions by the next scheduled meeting on May 2nd. I thank you for the opportunity to address this board.
Could we have a copy of that, please?
Copy of this?
You have one, Mr. Palmer? You good? You have an extra one?
I have, I have all copies for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have one for Mr. O'Connor?
I can give you my whole copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hi, Mayor. Nice to meet you. I live in Washingtonville, and I've been there for 36 years, from Paramus, New Jersey originally. I worked as Controller of Paramus Veterans Home for about 24 years, and Violin Veterans Home for about five years, 29 altogether. I retired five years ago. Anyway, I was audited every year that I worked there by the VA and my billing, which was almost a million dollars a month, by the Office of Legislative Services. That was a three-year audit. They were back three years. They'd stay six months. I was ordered by the ombudsmen's on rent computations, and I was ordered by Medicare. And then Christie, on top of that, didn't trust any of those people, and he sent in KPMG and audited two years of my VA billing, so before I retired. And what is this, we should welcome audits. It's healthy. And when they came in the door, they were surprised. I'd have their folders for them there and say, "There's 24 months. See if you can find anything." And they were surprised I was that open about it. But anyway, so I was involved in the elections in 2016 and 2020, the federal, the congressional here. And very involved with that. And then I got involved with the mayoral race over here. And I sat in during that, I observed that election. We only had 1,095 votes out of 4,200, but I was very confident that it was true. You had to sign next to your signature, previous signature and stuff like that. That didn't happen the 2/22 midterms. That was a little chicken scratch, and somebody had to look at it and say, "Oh, it's got some type of similarity to his original signature." It had no similarity whatsoever. So there's issues, and we know that. Our local election over there was really good. I, when I, when I filled out, after I did my signature and they verified it, I went up, I put in the mail, the ballot into the machine. It gave me a number, 250. It was a 250 vote. And then we finished it up, and then I observed for two hours and stuff like that. And it turned out, it was really, I felt really confident about the election. But the biggest question in my mind was, how many mail-in ballots are there? And there was only 25. So that, I felt good about that, you know what I mean? So anyway, I'm just telling you that in general, background stuff, we should welcome audits and encourage it. And it's healthy, and that's the way we should be. We know there's discrepancies, and we know there's a lot of people dead on voter rolls and things like that, and they don't purge them. So that's, just give me a little bit of background. And you can feel comfortable probably in your local election. Know what I mean? Very little turnout usually.
Sadly.
Yeah, right. So we had 4,200. We only had 1,095, and we hit all 2,000 residences.
We have 5,420, and I think 1,000 people came to the polls at 12:40. 9:40.
Right, so it's about the same kind of state, even though we hit every door. But we only talked to like one out of every four doors. But this isn't about my situation. It's about our team here that's very involved with this.
Thank you, appreciate it.
This is for our kids and our grandkids.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My name is William Palmer.
Okay. Anything further from the public?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Please. Come on up, give us your name.
My name's Alan Sora.
Are you related to?
Yes, I am her daughter. So first, I want to say I appreciate all the things that you listed that you've done for our town or village since you've been elected. But did you do all those things by yourself, or did people help?
This, highway, everything. It's a team.
You kept saying "I, I, I," so. So I, so I know that you want to increase your salary 75,000. Do you think it would be nice, this is just an opinion question, to maybe split it between the people who've helped you, or do you not think that's fair?
That's up to them. I didn't propose the number. I had nothing to do with negotiating the number, and they'll decide the number.
So do you know who did propose the number?
I did.
You did?
Yes.
Just asking for clarification. My next question, just one more question actually, is that earlier you said that you didn't have time, or trustee Carl said you didn't have time to answer his emails. You said you didn't have time.
No, no, he was copied.
What?
No, no, I think he got it wrong.
No, he said that he didn't answer any email that he was copying on. That's what you said. What? Oh, well, either way, then you can delete that part of my question.
I've got a thought in my head now.
Sorry. Earlier, you stated that you didn't have time or it didn't fit into the schedule to talk to them before the meetings. So I was just wondering how you were going to make time to be a full-time mayor for all the other things on top of all the volunteer work you do, owning business and everything like that, how you were going to make time to be a full-time mayor.
Well, you're suggesting that making time to be full-time, I am full-time without any designation whatsoever. I put 40-plus hours a week in this village.
I'm just asking how you make time for that.
You don't sleep. You sleep little. You take away from family. You find ways. You stitch together time. You know, tonight, we'll probably get out of here about 10:30, so.
So will everyone else, right?
No, 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 no. You're talking about me.
Yeah.
Right, so if I start my day at 6:00, it's here, right? Let's say today it was. So 6:00 to 6:00 is 12, to 10:30, so that's 16 and a half hours today, while still trying to run a business, while still being a dad, while still being a husband.
Yeah, just asking for clarification.
And while, and while attending a golf meeting for a charity.
Yeah, that's all I needed clarification.
Okay.
So the guys came to mow yesterday, and there's almost like a grass fence. Every year, the grass and the trees come closer and closer and closer to the cul-de-sac. If anybody visits my cul-de-sac tomorrow, you will see that they're mowing further and further away from the trees. Okay. It's been a problem for about the last 10 years, the wooded area where I live. If these guys have a problem finding the dead wood and the branches, I can show them exactly where they are. And since the leaves are blooming on the trees and everything, I don't want to have to come back in September and be told, "Well, we'll do it when there's no leaves on." That area has, they removed a tree about a month and a half, two months ago. There was a dead tree that fell. I contacted you, and it was taken care of the next day. It looks worse. I contacted you.
And I did what?
And it was taken care of the next day.
The next day?
The next day. The guys came to remove the dead. Well, it was across, across the field, and a lot of people walk from, actually, the other development, Freeman Homes, they walk through. There's a lot of socialization between some new people in our area. Now, I brought some pictures that I took on April 6th, and I tried to open my phone quietly, but it didn't work. So what I wanted to show you was, on April 6th, the cleaning truck came. You know, they clean the streets and everything. So I have some pictures here right, actually, they were still in my development. You can see the tracks. And the reason I'm showing you this is, I'd like, if you pass it around, I'd like you to blow up these pictures because there are so many stones from when the cul-de-sac was oiled and stoned. And if they oiled up to the curb, it might not have been a problem. But if you come on a rainy day, you're going to see for the first time in the 38 years I'm up here, there are puddles in the street, between the street and the curves. But I wanted you all to look, and on some of these, you can actually see, like this on the grass. Look at all the stones on the grass. This is on your property next to my house. The grass, you can't see it when the grass gets mowed. You know, you have to wait until it goes down, well, yeah. It's a mess. I mean, the kids are, finally, there's kids playing on a cul-de-sac at night.
That's nice.
And their bicycles are getting stuck, their little electric thing, some of the kids are falling off. And then we still have kids that go down to where all these branches. There's one section, it looks like somebody actually dumped a batch of branches in the, I'll say the woods, although you can actually see it at the end of the cul-de-sac. It's a mess. It's a mess.
I'm going to, because I think we spoke about this already once.
Yeah, for three years. This is the fourth year.
No, no, but, but I had the engineer and the building inspector tell me where our demarc is, what we own and what we don't own.
Oh, I know, but this is on my side of the creek. This is not on the other side of the creek.
Yeah, I'm not sure we own on the other side of the creek.
No, no, no. This is on my side of the creek.
Which is my side of the creek.
Not the other side, which is the village.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it's yours. And again, I will say, yes, the tree was removed the next day when I sent you an email the day before. So I'll give you credit for that. Okay, but that area, if you want to send a supervisor, I will take, point these things out. But they have to, you know, there's a sign, if you recall, that it says, "No electric vehicles."
No motorized vehicles.
No motor, when that was put up about 12 years ago, there were no grass or even trees or anything in front of that sign. Now you walk through the grass and the growth to get to that sign.
Is the sign gone now?
It's just, no.
Oh, it's there, but it's buried.
But, but it's like every year, they mow further and further away. Like I say, if you want to send the supervisor down, I'll give a tour.
I think I'll come down.
Okay, let me know, and we'll have a date.
We'll have a date.
Okay, right.
Thank you, much. Okay. Please.
Hi, Elizabeth Tischler. Thank you very much. I wondered what your thoughts are about a two-day cleanup so that all of our neighbors could participate if they so choose. That's all.
Speak to the organization.
Okay. All right. How are you?
Good evening. Mayor, Board.
Sir, how are you?
Attorney. Clerk. My name is Everett Bierker, 46 Water Plant Road. I know I'm not one of your constituents, but I am certainly one of your neighbors.
Sure.
Please, for the record, correspondence from March 27th, from Bryan Newt, Town of Monroe, to Elise Tarun from the village. Have you guys received the copy before?
Yes, we have it.
Have you read that copy?
Yes, we have.
Have you had conversations about the copy?
That's privileged.
Okay, I understand. I understand that the Department of Health from New York State is involved in this.
Please address your comments to the board.
Okay, no, no, I, I'll explain why. We've had conversations with the same attorney from the state. And obviously, certain information was privileged. So my question for you is, and the board, is what do we plan on doing with it? What is our next course of action? And I say "our" course of action, not yours. There's pretty clear deficiencies in the law that was passed.
Did the attorney at the Department of Health, did he say deficiencies?
Yes, he did. But he didn't, he could not.
I'm asking, he says.
He could not comment about the conversation between Mrs. Tarun and himself, but yes, there are deficiencies in it. So what is our next course of action? And I come to you as a neighbor. We all come to you. We all did, as neighbors, not as enemies, but as friends. All right, as stewards of the land and not trespassers. All right? We want to be as big a part of this as, as we can be. So my question is, are we repealing and resorting back to the old? Are we repealing and rewriting? Are we amending, and how? What's our next course of action?
Everett, I don't know the answer to those three questions at this time. But hopefully, I will at some point, for sure.
Okay. Just need to double-check my notes, make sure I haven't missed anything. Thank you.
Thanks, Everett. Appreciate it.
Take care, guys.
Okay, anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay. I need a motion to go into executive session for attorney-client and for personnel.
Barringer will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
All the questions?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Why, aye. So Carrie, thank you, everyone, for coming.